That we need to make sure that we're projecting our voice and because the speakers are, you have one speaker in between.
All right, Ms. Rolco.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove. Here. Trustee Larson.
Here.
Supervisor Rush via telecommunications.
Here.
And there is a quorum present. Supervisor Rush has requested to participate via electronic participation. She does have one of the valid reasons listed in the statute, so without objection because there is no procedure in the policy. How to move forward, then she'll be allowed to participate electronically. Bill's still running the meeting here.
Okay, do we need, should we have a vote on that, or I don't know the technicality on that.
The policy doesn't require it.
Okay, all right, okay, that's fine. Is that okay, Lisa, or Rush?
Um, yeah.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Okay, we need approval of prior minutes of August 12, 2013. Any questions or comments on those minutes?
First, I make a motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion, Kathy makes the motion second.
Second.
Hi. Lisa. Any comments or suggestions or comments?
There's a couple of misspellings on a few things. Under number six reports, my last name was spelled incorrectly. And under, um, under, where else did I put it? Under bill payment, it said that, it says trustee DeGrove and it just said trustee DeGrove.
I renamed her on purpose.
No, I can spell that name.
Bill Paving, I will, I will get that, oh yeah. Okay, we got it, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments? See none, call for Rolco.
Trustee DeGrove.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
And Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Number five on our agenda, public participation. Anybody signed up for public participation on agenda items only? And Wendy, as the editor and the.
I do. It's on the minutes.
Okay, just state your name for the record, Wendy.
Wendy Gordon.
Okay.
And it's on the minutes. I would just like the following statement to be included as a September meeting minutes. The statement's in regard to attorney Deed's opinion on the August Avon Township Board meeting about who's in control of the food pantry. The statement is, and I have it in writing for you, Jeannie. After last month's meeting, I provided attorney Deed's a copy of the contract between the Avon Township Community Foundation and the Northern Illinois Food Bank, as well as official communication from the Northern Illinois Food Bank, which reiterates that the Avon Township Community Foundation is the fiscal, programmatic, and operational manager of the Avon Township Food Pantry. For the record, I'd like it, I'd just like to restate that the trustees are not in control, the board is not in control of the food pantry. In addition, as I committed to here last month, I have asked Sam Yingling, fellow Avon Township Community Board, Foundation Board member, through official correspondence, both email and written US mail, to accept and appoint a trustees Larson, McNeil, and/or Delmar to the Foundation Board. As of this evening, Mr. Yingling has not responded to that request.
Excuse me, Claire, this is on agenda items only, and I don't know where she's coming up under agenda item.
Meet him in the minutes.
And she's talking about the minutes, Lisa, she was talking about correction of the minutes, I believe, right?
Yes, the August meetings, yes.
But she's reading a report now.
No, I read a statement.
Okay. Continue.
Are you done, Wendy?
I am done, Bill, thank you.
Do you have a copy which you just read that maybe you can hand to the trustees?
I just made one and I gave it to Jeannie.
Maybe you can make some copies so all the trustees have that too, and even our attorney. I imagine he's seen it, but whatever. Okay, any other questions, Lisa?
No.
Okay, any other public participation? Thanks, Wendy. Okay, we got reports. Hey, Lisa.
Yes, Bill.
You are up.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank the trustees for stepping up during my personal reasons why I am not there. I would go into more details, but it wouldn't be a pretty story.
We got time.
You don't want to hear it. I do thank everybody for their help in helping the office to run smoothly. It is not something that I anticipated, nor did I anticipate it lasting as long as it has. That being said, I'll continue on my regular, my reports. I have included the Clerk Program Update Report for Avon Township, so that you can see. Clerk is the company that sprays for the mosquitoes. And it has, and it was quite a few details in there as well. In addition, the other, my other regular reports are in there. And then I have the last given update just on such a truck, which I'm going to thank Lupe for once again helping me big time with this. This is something that I, this is my baby and I love this program. And she has been a superb help in getting this program making it run along. I would encourage any of the trustees, excuse me, who would like to attend on the 28th to help out, to please come out and help. In the past, it's just usually been me, Tony, and in the Highway Department. And then it's also been Mr. McNeil, who has also been a great help. So anybody who would like to come out and help is more than welcome to come out and help. And I think that's all we have. Oh, yeah, and I also included a letter from one of our, what is it? That thanks Bob Kula, is Bob here?
Yes, Bob is here, that's right, and also in fact, it's Bob Kula and Attorney Deed.
There's a nice letter in here that thanks Bob Kula. I hope he is able to see this letter. And thanks him about the, about the North Circle Drive that was transformed from a flatable to asphalt to a well-engineered attractive roadway. So Bob, thank you very much, and the residents also, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Lisa.
I have a question.
A question, Lisa? Kathy?
On page 13, it's just the tally of the people who have walked into the office. And I just have a procedural question. When I was in the office, the phones were ringing off the hook. Sometimes there were three people in the office answering phone calls. Is there a way to capture those phone calls so we know how many people we service through the phones?
We could, we could do that as well. That could always be a tally that we can pick on. I would be happy to add that on to that.
It certainly would boost those numbers.
I'd be happy.
And the libraries do that, libraries do that, so that's where I'm coming.
And I guess I would echo on that with Kathy, because as you know, Lisa, I was with, I figured one of those hollies coming in and you were there by yourself. It was, it is amazing coming to this office. People think township government's dead. Come to this office someday and listen to the phones ring and people come in. It's far from even dead. Thank you, Lisa, for your time in doing that.
Sure, no problem.
Any other things for Lisa?
I just want to make notes, so everyone knows I'll be writing frantically. Our recorder just died, so.
Okay.
We'll be doing this via my notes.
Well, you've got to do now for a couple of months, Lisa probably, so just remember all this stuff, okay?
There you go.
Okay, anything else from Supervisor Rush? Down to the Highway Commissioner, Bob, you got anything to say?
Just a few things.
Lisa?
Yes.
So the Highway Department's hosting an electronic collection, November 9th. Lisa, I was wondering if we can, starting like the 1st of October, if we could start putting that on the marquee out front, so the residents will be aware of that?
Oh, mid-October, because at the time, they're too long, people tend to start ignoring what's on there. So I think mid-October would be good. I'm sad about.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, just as long as it gets on, I would think that's Bob's little work.
I just want to get it, I just want to get it out there.
I will definitely be happy to put that on there.
Thank you.
And I do apologize for the meeting not being on this month. Unfortunately, it cannot be done remotely, and otherwise I would put it on, because I know that's one of Kathy's big things, things that she likes to see. So I do apologize for that, Kathy.
I understand.
You understand, Lisa. Anything else, Bob?
There's some smaller stuff in there, but I do want to note that we started a new stormwater, storm sewer install on Lake Avenue and Highland Lake. Where I'm trying to schedule that Lake Avenue for being paved 2015, so I have stormwater work that needs to be done. So we're doing some upgrades over there to prepare for 2015. So that's one thing that's going on. And I think a few of you know that one of the pillars over there in Highland Lake was hit, August 22nd by a school bus. It took the, it actually took the pillar out, knocked it down, did a lot of damage to the bus. So there's been some question back and forth about whose pillar it is. It actually falls on the Lake County Department of Transportation's right of way. Their, their desire is to have the other one removed as well. You know, I have mixed feelings about it, but in a, for a safety standpoint with the amount of traffic, it's not like it was, you know, 30, 40 years ago, so. But it's between Lake County and the Highland Lake Property Owners Association, so I'm working with them. The system, with the removal of the other one, if that's the way it's going to fall, but just so you guys know what's going on there. And we regraded Oak Court, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we do have one gravel road in the township. It falls under our jurisdiction, so we did, we regraded that. We do that probably four to five times a year, it just gets, it just gets messed up. I know Pat talked in the past about paving it, but you know, in the old days, they, sometimes they threw these roads in and, you know, zigzags around the right of way, and it goes from one side to the other, and there's some question about that road even being where it's supposed to be. So we're going to leave it alone for right now, there's only three homes on it, so we'll just maintain the gravel and keep everybody happy. And, oh, we just finished up, I put on there, we're currently chipping brush and trees from that storm on the 30th, but we just finished that up today, so that's all done. Had a lot of, it was mostly Graves Lake and Third Lake, Ron Lake really didn't have that much damage, but all it was over on the, on the east side. And then I completed a Reasonable Suspicion Seminar, and it's mandatory. It's, you know, to educate me on recognition of alcohol and substance abuse for the employees, since we do have random alcohol and drug testing at work. And then the last thing is the bus. The bus, I am going to switch over to a pace van, and I'm going to tell you why. It still holds six passengers rather than eight. We've used, I've talked to Suzanne about this, and you know, we've used, we've filled it to capacity, I think, once in the history of the bus. The reason, the main reason to switch is when we go to the bus, when we go to the van, excuse me, it still is handicapped, the whole thing, nothing changes there. But pace pays for the maintenance of the bus. So all that annual maintenance that we have to do, the tune-ups, all that stuff that has to be done, the inspection is paid for by pace. When it's, when it's the bus, we have to pay for that ourselves, so that's where we are on that.
The van holds what, six?
Eight. The bus holds, excuse me, the van holds six, the bus holds eight.
I personally would like to see you, see you keep the bus because of the height and everything else, because the van's going to be a little shorter.
Yeah, but it still has the whole, it has the whole thing in the back. It opens up, it has the lift gate for the, for the wheelchair. There's no problem with all that stuff, you know, it's a raised van, it's not like a standard van, it has a raised height on it. So it's not going to be any less accessible for anybody, and it's going to save us a lot of money as far as maintenance comes. And that's it.
Any other questions for Bob?
It's a bus netting, I guess. So do you foresee in the future expanding it and having two drivers and a van and a bus?
You know, that's always open, but I just don't see the need right now. We don't, the bus is.
Okay, I guess I'm going to ask a lot of people instead, make people busy. Also, that was a lot of telephone calls we got, and even though, it's like everybody wants Monday morning to go to the doctor. And when they, she can only take a couple people at a time, depending on how the time slots go. So there were a lot of turnaways that maybe we should be recording how many people weren't served because they couldn't fit into the time slot sheet.
Well, Dan and Tori can be talking about the upcoming bus service that is going on, so that is always another option that we can always refer people to.
And there's dial-a-ride, and there's, you know, so there's, there's other ways to get around. I'm not going to, I don't want to prohibit anybody from using our service, but it's, you know, financially, it makes sense when the bus just isn't at capacity right now.
Because there are often, the bus only goes out maybe once a whole entire day, and then it doesn't go out the rest of the day.
Right, right.
And again, that's, you know, this isn't a long-term lease again, so if, you know, in the, you know, say a year or two years down the road, we find out that, hey, we need to get back to that bus, well, you know, we can make the move at that time, but right now, I think it makes sense to do what we're doing.
And then I have a question that's off topic. Ashbores, I know the township has been dealing with, with trees on township property. Has there ever, in the past, been any way to help residents replace their trees that they're, they're going to lose in the future? You know, I've seen that happen with the.
Yeah, you know, we don't, we don't have a tree replacement program right now. We do for construction, when we do construction, we have to move trees, you know, for that reason, but, you know, whether I can afford that in a budget, I, you know, it's something I have to look into. But, you know, if we're talking about replacing everybody's ash tree, there's.
No, just using our resources that we would be able to.
I mean, we could, you know, help steer people the right way on our website, but frankly, the ash borer is, you know, I think you guys know it's from Michigan all the way south to, I think Missouri now, or, and it's all the way east to Maine and south, or west to Iowa, so it's, it's here. There's no more, you know, that, all that stuff they put in there, and they used to put in the paper about, you know, don't move your firewood. That's over now, it doesn't matter anymore. The ML Ashbor is here, they're doing their thing, and in five years, they're going to clean out what they're going to clean out, and they're going to move on.
Okay? I will, I will check in though, and see if what resources are, are offered for the claylaying trees, you know.
Yeah, because we're all going to get hit, it's going to change the nature of our neighborhoods and communities.
Absolutely, no doubt. We have, we have, we have trees marked right now on the right of way to come down because of that, so.
And that's something we could look at as a town venture too, and with highway, you know, something we can look into in another year. Or maybe next year for a budget. Can't do it this year.
Can't do it this year, but you know, maybe something like, like kind of Graves Lake does, like a, I think, 50/50 tree program.
You know, I think it was like 50/50 up to $100 or something when we did ours.
So, you know, it wouldn't be like a total reimbursement out of our pocket, but maybe we could help, you know, right, and we could, let's talk. Let me check into other resources though, and then I'll get back to you the next minute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I will call on that, with Bob with that, I saw, went by today and I saw the, all the stones gone, you know. It is, it's, it's history, so unfortunately, it's on the Highway Department, but.
Yeah.
It is, it's narrow, but.
It is, and you know, the, and the, the thing is, is, you know, the ones on Washington Street will be gone within two years. The ones on South Circle, just because of the widening of Washington Street.
They're not going to replace them, I suppose.
Like, again, those are on Lake County's.
Right, but they.
No, no, Lake County's made it, I think they've made it pretty clear that they don't want them there, just because of the safety issue. So I don't see them, you know, wanting to relocate them, so. And then Haynesville Road, you know, you got to believe it's, it's going to be widened, you know, it's just a matter of time.
The trees may be down, they've already started efforts in Haynesville to remove all the trees there.
Right.
They're working on like a five-year program to get all of the trees removed and whatnot, so they'll be going regardless of whether it's widened or not.
Right. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Bob? Thanks, Bob. Assessor is not here tonight, and I guess he included a report in the packet for the trustees to look over. So that brings down the clerk's report. Do you have anything?
Just a couple things in your clerk, in the clerk's report is the new FOIA's. We received five new FOIA's since our last meeting. Four have been completed. We have one that's passed two, and one outstanding, as reported last month. We have volunteer reports, this is the first time you've seen that, it is up to date. We also have completed ours with the state, there was some backlog, so those have all been, for the D.C.'s judicial court, those have all been completed. I'm just a reminder, I've already talked to you about it, that we've got the upcoming records audit on September 18th, where we have the TOIs coming in to help us with that audit. Also, you'll notice that, that there's a couple of outstanding things that we talked about last time, so if you need any additional information on the deputy clerk, I guess now would be the time to ask it. But once, once the person is selected, I just want to assure you, once, if you agree to do this, I will come back with that person to the trustees. The trainees expenditure is outstanding, and you have in your packet the cost of the training. There is no provision for a reduction in the training registration fees. But three nights is, is what I'm proposing to stay and to go to the three days, three days of training. And the costs are broken down in your packet. Also, there's, was a request that came through my desk regarding the exchange club, that's just for your information. Also note that your packets are numbered because of the confusion that we had, and we've got, our printer is, sometimes skips a page. So it makes it easy for me to follow, but also I thought it would be easy for your discussion, so that if you, you can say, especially when we talked about the bills, page 13, this, it makes it a lot easier for us to, to move the meeting a lot.
Number six, the request from that, from the exchange club, that should go through, that should go through my office? And then that's when, and I would go over something like that, but that is something that should go through my office.
Yeah, Lisa, I would have gone through your office, but I just got it when the packets went out, so I just made sure that the, the board gave it to them. You probably have one, I would bet that if you didn't have it by the time this went out, you would get it within a day or two.
All right, thank you.
And that will be, Lisa, with that, the breakfast, I did see something, we'll have our next meeting before this breakfast?
I don't know what the date of this breakfast is.
I thought I saw.
Sunday the 13th.
His flyer is in here, yeah, it's a, it's a 13th, October 13th.
So we'll have another meeting.
Yeah, you have another, this is really.
Well, though, we probably, well, I don't know, we need to probably, because they'll need to get their money in before our next meeting, correct?
Yeah, it says.
Yeah, by September 29th, it says, do I make a motion? This is not a very expensive one. And it does cover a lot of, it is, it is a huge, hugely, excuse me, a hugely attended event. I would, I would make a motion at least for, for $150.
Now, before we go forward with that, can we move this to the financial area, because it's actually not specifically listed on the agenda? Although it would fall under financial on the bills, so I'd like to at least move it to that area of the agenda.
Okay, is that okay, Lisa, moving to the financial stuff?
That's fine.
So at least we know what you're thinking, 150 anyway, okay. Thank you. Anything else, Jean?
Nope, nothing else for me.
Any questions for our clerk?
I would just like to make a comment that during this most trying time with the absence of Supervisor Rush, one Kirby thought hours that she put in do not resemble part-time hours. She was here all the time, she was here after hours, she really worked hard alongside the staff. She did a great job reassuring everyone that the business of the township will move forward in an appropriate manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, Lisa, how many people takes to replace you?
I was just thinking that, and I would also like to echo Kathy's sentiments, because although it doesn't seem like I have been communicating with the office, I have been in constant communication with the office since this all started as well. And I do appreciate Jeannie's assistance during this as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, see, nothing else, trustees' report, Kathy, you have something I see?
Yeah, I'll give you a Cliff Notes version of my report. I would reiterate that I was so pleasantly surprised in the performance of township office staff. I do regret that Supervisor Rush did not communicate with the board. There were other communications going, but formally, we were not privy to what was going on, just that she wasn't here. So that was difficult for me personally. I would also recognize, acknowledge that I have received written and verbal concerns regarding the food pantry and the actions of a temporary worker, which resulted in losses of food, time, money, and equaled a lot of bad relations. So, I mean, this was a going-on thing, and I wanted to acknowledge that, yes, I received it, yes, I heard it, and I hope as we move on with the, with the new members of the foundation, that this is, is an isolated incident that won't be repeated. I also had interactions with many, with some residents who had misinformation about food pantry hours. They didn't know when hours were at our office. A lot of phone calls about questions, even from service providers about our bus service. So moving on, in the future, I'm hoping we formulate at our special meetings and our meeting of the whole, the outreach program that could easily remedy some of these problems, such as developing new handouts and going physically to each building, and making sure the hours are posted correctly. And people that are service providers in our area, that they have, we reach out to them and so, and inform them exactly how they can help their clients too. That's it. Oh, no, it's not. Pet Clinic, I went to it, it was awesome. Great project, great partnership, lots of great looking dogs.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Any other trustees, Lisa, you have anything to say?
Chris? I had an opportunity just Saturday night to go to the Haynesville Concert in the Park. It was a very nice, small, small type of an affair, was, you know, just a couple of beer vendors, a bunch of people hanging out and listening to some good music. Haynesville had commented that it had gone well enough, they were going to look at doing a couple of these over the next couple of years again, possibly in addition to what has become the regular Haynesville Fest. I also had the opportunity to attend a BEST meeting with trustee DeGrove earlier in the month regarding what's youth educational opportunities, I believe. Clerk Kirby was there in her capacity on the BEST board as well. Very informative, I know Senator Bush, a couple of the mayors were there, a number of other trustees, library board members. Had some great breakout sessions at the end of that meeting. I'd like to thank Jeannie Kirby, as her non-clerk's help, for inviting us along. It was a great opportunity, Jeannie, thank you.
Really, no, I didn't invite you. Everybody got a letter, so it wasn't really me.
That's all I have tonight, thanks.
And I don't know who was responsible for putting this on the agenda, again, the trustees' report, but I appreciate that. You know, I have really nothing to add tonight. It's been four-plus years since we were able to really, on the agenda to talk. We always had to file a report or whatever. So I just, I'm glad we're back on the agenda. With that being said.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, thank you, Lisa. With that being said, I guess we go to our bill payments. As you see in front of you, we'll, we'll go through the prepaid bills first. Need a motion for the prepaid bills, I know there's some questions on them. So anybody have any questions on the prepaid bills?
Of course, you have to have a motion.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
I'll motion.
I'm sorry. We got a motion to accept the prepaid bills, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Now we can have a discussion. Is there any discussion on the prepaid bills? I noticed there is one, I'll, I'll start off on the prepaid bill, it has to do with the assessor's office, supposedly.
That's the outstanding bill?
No, that was on, well, pardon, was on the visa bill, which got paid, and did not get paid. It was. It was, part of that would've been like, I, I want to say, Chris, I don't know if you got it right, in front of you, like five hundred and some dollars, maybe not, it was, it was his hotel room, because he went over budget on the, his line item.
Yeah, that item, that particular portion of the item was not included on the check, it was excluded because it already exceeded the budget.
Right.
That's not going to be, that's not.
That's not being paid.
Correct.
My comment on that is, I, I did see another line item, and, and going through the assessor's bill, he did request it to be on that one item, on five dash twelve dash five thirty-nine, which still has a thousand dollars in it. I, I, sometimes I question that, part of that overspend on, on the assessor's part, probably could've been taken out of that five dash twelve, five thirty-nine, instead of, help me out here, I don't have it in front of me, I forget what the number is on that, it's, it's up a little, up a couple line items, that he's over budget on. Going forward, saying, going, saying that going forward, I think if we go look through this budget again, we have a budget hearing again, or, or next year we do the budget, I would combine those two line items, the five, twelve, five thirty-nine with the other one, and I don't see it, I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me.
Five twenty-six.
I don't see that one bill, I see on the outstanding bill, the following bill, the authorized, is that this resolution request, but I don't see anything on the outstanding bill, I mean, on the prepaid bill.
The prepaid bill, Lisa, what, what they didn't get, was on the visa bill?
He's talking about the short paid portion of the visa bill that is not on the check register.
Yours is okay, and Bob's is okay, you're in line, but Chris's assessor didn't, was over budget on that.
Okay.
With, and, help me out, Chris, what was, uh?
I don't have the.
Okay, here, no, no, what I mean, I want the line item, is, oh, five dash twelve, five twenty-seven, he's almost over budget on that item, but then you got the five twelve, five thirty-nine, he is not taking any money out of it.
No, five twenty-six is the actual travel budget, I think that.
The travel, which is the travel, he's got plenty of money in travel, right? No, he's getting, he's over budget, okay, he's over budget on travel. Okay.
Yeah, he could've taken this out of conferences, is what you're saying.
Right, I thought he could take it out of con, but the travel's different, like, I can't believe he's over travel, I wonder if he puts something into travel, it shouldn't be over travel, but I don't know.
Travel could mean travel just to the different residents to do his job, or travel to a conference or convention.
Right.
I think that a travel to the conference would fall under that conference line item, and the other travel doesn't fall under that conference line item.
It's too bad Assessor Ditten's not here tonight to, you know, to go through this. And I don't know if I saw the resolution, we're going to be talking about that, is that what Chris, uh, number eight?
I haven't seen the resolution.
I don't know, did we get a resolution?
I did text him, because I hadn't got the resolutions for the packet, and I texted him again today, and he responded by telling me that Jerry Deeds had the document.
Oh, I, I had sent that old form to you, and you sent it to him, and that's the last I heard of it.
Now we got a communication problem.
Okay, well, with the past, the supervisor has also done most of those, so, i- if you want, you can just throw all the blame away.
No, no, we're not blaming you, Lisa, we just, we gotta get, we're just checking this thing out, because he's got money in his conference and convention, now whether we want to move it down there, or, or, are we, we're gonna have to do a reappraisal of, and I don't know how much we're gonna need to do that ten percent.
Yeah, she's, she's come up with the amount, and which account one's this is from. So I will send an email now and tell him that this needs to be done air, baby.
Exactly, and, and then once again, I, you know, I always hate to point fingers at people, but the man hasn't come here for two or three meetings, and this is a meeting he's over budget, he should've been here. So, I don't feel I'm out of line by questioning, and maybe saying, you know, where are you? So, we're not, we're not blaming you, Lisa, at all, on this, it's, it's assessor here, it's over budget. So, with that in mind, we did not pay that, so I guess, but I don't know how we would handle, because, yeah, the bill's getting paid, but part of that bill is not getting paid.
Unfortunately, the bill carries over the next statement, correct?
Yeah, so we'll have, probably interest, we'll want to lay claim we'll have right interest, though.
I'm not sure what the terms of the credit card are.
Yeah, I, it, it won't be much, because it's not a whole lot, because the other ones, the travel, I do have here, is, now I don't have, it's like about, there's two hundred, low over two hundred dollars. Now, I'm not su, I don't think that got paid, because that's in the travel, and that's to our employees, well, two of them is for Chris, and the real minor ones for Maria and Richard, so I hope, hopefully those two real minor ones somehow got paid, even though we are over budget, but I don't know if they did or not, I forgot to ask David today. At least those two, our employees got paid for the travel, which is like four dollars and nine dollars, so hopefully they got paid. So, with that being said, any other comments on the prepaid bills? Okay, need a, we got the motion, and a second, roll call, please.
Um, Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove.
Aye.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, now, our regular bills, any, need a motion to accept our regular bills?
Motion.
Lisa, Delmar, Trustee Delmar, second.
Second.
By Trustee DeGrove. Any discussion on our regular bills? Seeing none, I call for a roll call.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove.
Aye.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
This is where you would add that motion in.
Oh, I'm, okay, well.
During this one, we're supposed to approve the hundred and fifty for the exchange club?
Yeah, we, we were just talking that, Lisa, you, you've got great ears. So I guess we need to add into that when that bill comes in for a hundred and fifty dollars to the exchange, Grace Lake Exchange Club, right?
Actually, we need a motion.
Yeah, a motion.
I'll make a motion to sponsor the Grace Lake Exchange Club, in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll put it.
Okay, we got first and the second, any discussion on that?
Yes, I, um, we still are operating without a donation policy, and I do not think that we should keep, should keep, continue funding projects until we address that issue. That's my two cents.
Now, I don't think that we should, that, I mean, we need, we'll be having a, a community of a home meeting in Sept, in September, but I don't think the organization should have to suffer for us not having a policy.
I, I would, I would echo that a little bit, Lisa, too, but we do need to get down, and it's been four years, want to get policy, and we, we talk about it, but we never do, so, I, 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 I kind of agree with Trustee DeGrove on that also, but, seeing what's fore and that, I'm glad we did it tonight, so they can move on with their, with their organization, but in September, if we have our community home meeting, I think we'll have some, maybe we'll, definitely have that on the agenda to address that. Okay, now we come to item number.
Roll call.
Oh, I thought we did that, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Uh, Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove.
Ifsting.
Okay.
And Trustee, Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we come to resolutions, reapproportions, which we don't have, I guess.
Right, and I did.
So I'll have to move that to the next.
Next meeting.
I did send the form, and it had Assessor Ditten giving me numbers or anything, I could've filled them in, it's really a simple resolution, but, I, I.
In the future, Jerry, can you continue to copy me on that as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, Jerry, there was, Clerk Kirby had the request as well for a travel reimbursement at the place before our next meeting, would we do that back under financials as well?
I, I, well.
If it was through number twelve?
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, I didn't see that on the agenda as a separate item, thank you. Never mind.
And also, I, I, we have policy on that, we're supposed to ask, but I don't remember, Lisa, help me on this one, because you might remember, we have the policy, and when we go to other conventions and stuff, we're supposed to, do we, they come with, like, what Jeanie just did, with a kind of a estimate of what it's gonna cost?
A per diem?
Well, not so much a per diem, what it's gonna cost for the convention, say, when they go for training or whatever, and I don't remember how we handled that, as far as to be okay, up to a certain expense, or?
We have done in the past, they've given the per diem in advance, take for, the, take for like the hotel or the train portion of it, but the travel portion of it is reimbursed after.
Right, right, but, but when, when they come in requesting that we're gonna go to a training class, the way our policy states it now, for the last three or four years, they, whoever, the assessor, maybe not so much the highway department, but the assessor, like, even yourself, the supervisor, they got some training to go to, and the clerks got training to go to, they usually are supposed to come to the board and request, we're gonna go to training, this is what our, we checked around for hotels, and that.
Right.
And, and stuff like that. And I guess we okayed it up to a certain limit, I believe, right? And then, and then when the next month, when the bills start coming in, then we okay the bills, because basically they've been okayed already.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I guess that would come down on numbers, so luckily we have it, we have it on the agenda then for the clerk, so, what, moving on forward, anytime assessors or, or your office wants to go through training, I. I don't think the highway gets to come and ask, because they got their own budget. They, they can ask, and then we'll, we'll okay it later on, but we've got to make sure it's on the, on the agenda to okay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright, that's good. All right, that being said, our annual financial report, 2013, everybody had a chance to kind of look through it?
That actually is not the annual financial report, that is the annual.
Audit, right, audit report, I'm just reading what's written in front of me, so, yeah, the audit report.
So it can be collected on the agenda, that is the audit report, the annual financial report would run into, on all the years.
Right, so we'll, we'll correct that, well.
A motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, so noted, yeah, okay, amend the agenda for a bigger audit report, instead of financial.
Do we need a? Usually we go and take that beyond.
No, 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 let's say it is an audit, not a financial.
Yeah, there's been a motion, so.
Second.
Okay, to change the agenda, item number nine, read approval of FY 2013, annual instead of financial, cross financial, cross out, and a audit report.
But wouldn't that be this financial year ending to the 2012, not 2013? Because we're in 2013 right now.
We end in 2013, no, Lisa, 12 to 13.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't.
Right, yeah, we end in, what's it, February, end of February.
Without objection, I'll imagine it should be 2012 and 2013.
Yeah, there we go, we'll put both, 2012, 2013, we'll put both years on.
The public has been going, I think.
Whatever it says on the audit report.
Yeah, there you go, whatever it says, what the audit says. Okay, with that being said, we have a motion on the floor to do that, do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, um, let's just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's correct. All right, now, we'll do a, we'll do a roll call on this, now we need to accept that audit report. Any que, or, make a motion.
Chris makes a motion.
Second.
Lisa, second. Any discussion on that audit report? Pretty much an audit, it's close to being done, so. Okay, roll call, vote please.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove.
Aye.
Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, item number 10, discussion of possible action, change of West Insurance Agency property insurance policy, is there, there's no one here, right? Lisa, you know anything about this? Are they supposed to be here tonight, or just read the report we?
No, actually, I'm, we're gonna have Chris, Chris actually attended this, and I would like Chris to kind of, I, I, I attended the first one, but if Chris finished it out, I would like him to kind of explain that, is that okay for us?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. So, in Lisa's absence, I followed up on a meeting, she had started with our current property and casualty insurer, Lisa had requested that an appraisal be done of all the property that the township currently owns, and the appraiser finally got back and recommended a reduced level of coverage that's appropriate based on the evaluate, the current valuation of all the real property that the township has. What it would do is save the township approximately twenty-three hundred dollars annually for this year, would issue us a six hundred dollar rebate, and this is the first part of what Supervisor Rush had started, which hopefully will reduce our final next year's insurance rates even further. So, I would like to commend you on, you know, starting this process off, I'm glad I could help finish it up in your absence as well.
Thank you.
So, that being said, I did provide a report of the current premium, the proposed premium, they're in your packet, demonstrating that difference, along with the current coverage levels that were provided by the insurance agency.
Any other questions for either Lisa or Chris on this item?
Well, I was just curious, the first page of it, the property on Haynesville isn't included, or?
There's no property, there's no improvement on that property, there's, some of these have things like flat poles, or signage, fences, things like that, but there is no building or content value at that particular location, therefore there's no premium associated with property damage.
Okay.
Nothing to be damaged, nothing to insure.
Other than liability, right, we do have liability.
Yeah, this does not count for the liability insurance, it doesn't handle any of the corporate officer's insurance or any of the rest of it, this is strictly a reduction in the premiums based on the personal property that the township owns.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Any other questions on this? Seeing none, we, we don't need any, we're not doing any action on this, right, we're just, this is a proposal, this is a report, right? So we don't really need a vote on anything on this, right? When will we?
Actually, Lisa, I think we need to authorize the insurance agency to reduce the premium, so do we need a vote for that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so moved?
What's the motion?
Um, the motion is to accept the changes to the West Insurance Agency property insurance policy, to reduce the premiums.
And they're changes, they're just?
They're reducing coverage levels in order to meet current valuation for replacement.
Okay, that'd be right. Okay, we got a motion on the floor from Chris, the second, Kathy, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove.
Aye.
Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, discussion of possible action regarding Deputy Clerk, you touched on that a little earlier, Jeanie, you have anything, or, or Lisa, the comment on this, right now?
Uh, no, just reiterate, this is for emergencies only, if I cannot be here, somebody that we, they're trained, that can step in, so that it's not an additional burden for trustees or for Supervisor Rush to take minutes and also participate in the meeting, and also, you know, it would be at the, at the pleasure of the board, like, for instance, if we're doing an audit, and we need some extra hands, they could step in, and they'd be paid for a per diem for their time, and.
In the past, the only time we've ever paid a clerk is when, obviously when there was no clerk, but we've never, ever paid a deputy clerk before, so I don't, I, I'm kind of concerned about paying someone to be a deputy clerk.
And it's only being paid if the clerk is not here.
Okay, but you also said, like, if you're, if you're gonna go through all the boxes, and they're gonna be.
Well, that would be at the pleasure of the board, if, if we have, but, for instance, one of the jobs of the trustee, or of the clerk, is to be there, to be present during any bidding process, if we ever go through a, a process where we need to have extra hands, there would be the ability to have extra hands. So, it's not, it's not anything that we would set them up for, other than at the pleasure of the board.
And I could see this basically being used as, if, in your case, like your case, Lisa, Jeanie, if something happens, or a real. And I could see this basically being used as, if, in your case, like your case, Lisa, Jeannie, if something happens, or if real, something happens to her, she can't be here all the time, that's where I see the role as a deputy clerk coming in, not so much the bidding process, because that shouldn't be too bad, I think, maybe once in a while, but it's just, just to keep the office going, just like Chris, the assessor, didn't imagine he has his deputy assessors over there just to keep the office going in case he's not there. We would look for names, then, you're gonna submit some names, or Lisa submitted names, and then?
No, that's, that responsibility comes under the clerk's.
Okay, and that would be, you're talking maybe next month, doesn't that bring some names?
Yep.
Okay, is that fine with you, Lisa? Next month, maybe have some names, or do, so we have a deputy clerk?
I'm just a little bit concerned about the paying part of it.
Right, well, we discussed the paying, when we, first, we gotta hire somebody or get somebody, then we worry about paying them. And then maybe we won't pay them.
Okay.
Won't pay them, we'll take it out of the supervisor, we'll take it out of the trustee, we'll take it out of trustee's salary.
I just wanna say, I do support that, that position.
Deputy clerk, I think we've had, Lisa, did we have a deputy clerk when you were clerk, I don't think we did, did we?
We had a deputy clerk, we had a couple of deputy clerks, and then near the end, we didn't have a deputy clerk.
Right.
It really was kind of unnecessary, but.
It's nice to have one when, in case you do it.
In the beginning, right, in the beginning, because, you know, when it's a new job and you're giving people, when you're, when you have things coming through and you need some help, it's good to have a deputy clerk. And it's also good to have a deputy clerk at the town hall meeting.
Yeah, I never gave that a thought, probably true.
Yeah, but we haven't ever, we haven't, up until the time when we didn't have clerk period, we've never ever paid a clerk before, a deputy clerk, but I have not objected to the deputy clerk, I agree we should have one, it's just the paying part, excuse me.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Okay, seeing that, then we'll go down to number 12, the clerk training request, we're.
We got to have a motion.
For.
Creating a position.
Oh, we gotta have a motion for that, okay.
What you're doing is you're giving me permission to.
Okay, we need a motion then to, I thought you were just gonna come with, but, okay. We need a motion to, so Clerk Kirby can go forward on bringing nominations for deputy clerk.
But it is also for paying them?
No. Well, it's up to the person making the motion, but I would say, no, just get us names, right? What your, Kathy, your motion's gonna be? Just to get names for deputy clerk without paying paid?
I think I need to clarify this, because this is, this is a position that would be only used for emergencies when the clerk cannot perform her job. It comes out of the training that I received as a clerk, because the clerk should not even be writing the minutes, even if they're tape recorded, because they did not attend the meeting. So, there is that venue where deputy clerk would then take that responsibility to be at the meeting and to write the minutes. And I think that that is rational and fair to make that, those kinds of functions to be paid. Or if something else came up, where we felt a deputy clerk should be there. The second piece is that the deputy clerk comes under the venue of the clerk, and the clerk is the one that appoints. Now, I'm going to put it out there, see who applies, go through the process, because I believe that's the way it should be. And I will bring you the result of that to your venue. And then, you know, we can talk about how much, but I think it would be a little counterintuitive and counterproductive to say to people, "Hey, we have this deputy clerk, but we don't know if you're going to be paid or not." I also think that the deputy clerk is, I think everyone should be training somebody to be a successor. There is no guarantee that this position could not become available for some reason, or that I would run for the next term. And it's nice when somebody can step in on a periodic basis and take over the responsibilities and understand the depth and the breadth of the job and what that job entails. Also, I think the other piece of it is that it's a way to encourage people to be involved in their township with very little cost to the board. They wouldn't come under any kind of IMRF or any kind, they wouldn't work enough hours. It is purely temporary, it is purely, as an emergency, and purely at the discretion of when the board would go for, except if I couldn't come to a meeting, I could call this person up, I would have had trade, you know, met with her or him and said, "Here's what we do, here's how we do it," so that they are not coming into a line.
So, how you wanna read your, how you wanna make your move?
I'm looking for lines, when do we have a meeting?
Well, I don't expect to be paying a whole lot.
So, what budget would you pull out of?
Well, it'd have to come out of the town budget.
Yeah.
And I don't expect this to be very much, I don't know if we wanna make, I think Jeannie's looking for some kind of a monetary value tonight. I think we should create the position first, and then maybe.
And then stipulate.
Stipulate the salary later, at a later date.
Right now, the figures that have been tossed around, and I've been doing some checking, and I believe this is what Barb was paid, which would be 50 bucks for the meeting to attend, and, you know, depending on like, the meeting, it can take up to four hours to do the minutes, but, you know, and pay for that.
It's because there was no other clerk, that's why she was paid.
And in this case, there would not be a clerk, because I would not be able to attend the meeting. It is like a substitute teacher. When the teacher can't be there, there's a substitute clerk that can step in and take over those responsibilities.
I think where I'm not clear, and maybe Lisa too, is in a substitute teacher example, you're still paying the teacher and you're paying the substitute, would that be the case with a deputy clerk?
The clerk's position is a salary position, so that still would be the case.
Right.
About you, Kathy, how you want?
So, I move that we, um, create the position of deputy clerk, and with a salary to be stipulated at a future date. So, we'll look at the numbers, we'll look at the lines, see where it's appropriate to take 50 dollars.
Or whatever, okay.
And who would approve the number of hours? Obviously, not in an emergency, that's not something you can foresee, but if you wanted to bring the person in for additional work or different additional aid, who would approve those hours, would those be pre-approved?
I believe that that should come from the trustees, so for instance, let's say that we have, let's just use the audit as the example, though I don't believe that this will be the case for the audit, but we're gonna have a big audit of all the records, and we're gonna pull all the records together, and we want more hands, to say. And none of the trustees will do it, but let's say that that's what we need. Then I would come back and say, "Here's what we need, we need some additional hours for this," and have the approval from the trustees for that time. Now, it could be that you could say, "Oh, well, you know, you don't need to do this, I can do this, I can do this," that may happen. But that would be truly at the discretion of the trustees, as far as I would treat the position.
We have the motion. Second, and Chris. I lost my train, so I was gonna ask one more question, but I'll think of it when we get down to the nitty. Yeah, when we get down to the nitty gritty of doing the pay. Like I said, I don't see this being a lot of money going out. So, but maybe a, like, for some reason, in this case, where Lisa's gone or something, and Jeannie can't show up to meeting, okay, you give somebody a stifle or something, come in and do that, that is worth it, so. With that being said, we need a roll call on this.
Trustee Dugrow?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Aye.
Trustee Delmar?
Aye.
Trustee McNeil?
Aye.
Supervisor Rush?
I would like it in the record that I'm going to say aye, but I do not believe in compensating the deputy clerk.
Okay. You have that saved next month, too. Okay, thank you. The clerk training request was in our packet for not to exceed, I think, was it 11, can I say 1100, I see?
Yeah, I think it was 1100.
Something like that, 1100?
Once I write it, it's out of my head.
Page 16, item five, expenditure not to exceed 1100 dollars.
So moved? You got a motion on the floor, or do we have a second? Look, it's right in front of me. Any other discussion on, now, this is just you going, right, Jeannie, or you have, right?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on that motion, Lisa? Okay, roll call, both please.
Trustee Larson?
Aye.
Trustee Dugrow?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Aye.
Trustee Delmar?
Aye.
Supervisor Rush?
Aye.
Okay, now we're down to the presentation of Family Services, I see Doug's here, are you going to speak, or?
It's our executive director, Paul Dean.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rush, can you hear me okay? Lisa, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, you just asked if you can hear him. We have.
I moved the microphone, hopefully that'll help.
Okay, did you hear who's on the floor, it's talking?
Would it be Mr. Williams?
No, it's Mr. Paul Dean.
Oh, Mr. Dean, okay.
Okay, Lisa, can you hear me okay? Can you hear Lisa?
I can, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I am Paul Dean, I'm the executive director of Family Service. I want to thank you all for your past support of our programs and for your consideration of continuing support for this year. Family Service is an 83-year-old social service organization providing high-quality, low- or no-cost services to the most underserved and lowest-income community members across Northern Cook and Lake County. And this past year, we served over 8,000 community members. Our request is for $5,000 in funding to help provide services to seniors and to caregivers of seniors throughout Avon Township through two of our programs, our counseling program and our CRC, which is our caregiver resource center. First, we are the only organization in Avon Township providing counselors to seniors and to caregivers of seniors, doing this in their homes any time that is needed, and doing this at no out-of-pocket cost to the seniors and to the caregivers. These services are badly needed, especially since the 2010 census showed a 20% increase in the senior population of Avon Township over the previous 10 years, so from 2000 to 2010. Our counselor, Gail Harris, is here, she is a licensed clinical social worker, NLCSW, with over 40 years of experience. Our average client satisfaction rating for our seniors and our caregivers for the past two years is 3.7 out of 4. And for the past two years, 96% plus of our clients rate their progress on their self-identified goals as either being excellent or satisfactory. So, we can be pretty sure that the seniors and caregivers we're serving are very pleased with the services they're receiving. In our counseling program for our fiscal year 2013, Gail served almost 60 unduplicated Avon Township residents with almost 900 hours of counseling. If you count the additional time that Gail spent out of session, researching resources, finding educational materials, and much more, this totals to well over 1,200 hours that we invested in the community. Second, regarding our CRC, our, regarding our CRC, our Caregiver Resource Center, this program provides information, resources, and referral assistance, as well as granting financial help in the areas of respite, which is a break for caregivers, gap filling for items like wheelchair ramp or grab bars in a shower, and legal assistance for medical power of attorney, legal power of attorney, DNR, and things like that. In our fiscal year 2013, we granted over $10,000 in funding to our Avon Township neighbors in need. In addition, over 96% of our CRC clients, for the second year in a row, reported being either extremely satisfied or very satisfied with the services that they received. Most importantly, we are asking for an increase in funding this year to $5,000, because our projections for the current fiscal year are running well ahead of the services we provided last year. And we are estimating a 20% or higher increase in the services needed in both counseling and CRC. It is absolutely vital that Family Service continue to provide these services for free, because the seniors and caregivers we serve almost always are unable to pay anything for these services. So, we are asking for your help to ensure that their needs will be met, especially with the increased number of seniors expected in Avon Township over the next 10 years, and especially so that our ability to continue to serve seniors and caregivers in their home, which is expenses to provide, that we can do so at no out-of-pocket cost to them and no cost for the services themselves. Again, on behalf of Family Service, thank you very much for your past funding and for your consideration for this year. We hope our partnership will continue in support of our neighbors in need. And at this point, I'm gonna turn things over to Gail Harris, who will tell you about one of the seniors that she has served.
I had a hard time figuring out which senior I wanted to tell you about, because there are so many. But the one that comes to mind is a woman who had a caregiver from a different country. She herself spoke, fluent Lithuanian and Russian, and her caregiver was Lithuanian. And she wanted to keep him in the country, so she married him. I only found out she married him after the phone happened. It turned out he had an alcohol problem. And he passed out, and she is a woman in a wheelchair who has one hand that she can use to dial the phone or use a computer. Fortunately, he had gotten her up that morning and put her in a wheelchair, but then when he didn't come to get her for lunch, she was able to maneuver herself and go into the kitchen. She found he passed out, and she called and I sent the police. We have had three such incidents. And my job was to come up with a safety plan for her, make sure she's financially safe from any indiscretion that he might be prone to do under the influence, and also to make sure that she had someone to take care of her. One of the reasons that she married him was because he was one of the few people who could lift her, she's a fairly large woman. And she had also allowed him to move his children from Lithuania into this country so that they could get an education here and go to school. She took that obligation on as well, moved them home, so their lives are very enmeshed at this point. Now, one of the things that I did, not speaking Lithuanian, I couldn't communicate very well with him, but I did find some AA meetings where they spoke Russian, he speaks fluent Russian, so that worked out. And I also found a counselor who can speak to him in his own language and educate him about his substance abuse problem. Now, I'm continuing to help her, and I'm getting legal counsel for her as well. And throughout all of this, my job is to make sure that she stays stress-free and safe. So, that's what I've been doing with her. If you've got time, I've got one more story. I had a client who wanted a dog. She decided that her life would be complete if she had a dog, and besides that, it would be good for her health, because she would walk. I went to animal control, I paid the money to get the dog saved. I made sure he had all of his shots, that he was neutered and all of that, I paid for it. I took her the dog, she loved the dog, her cat hated the dog. I have the dog.
No good deed.
Okay. We're not doing any other action, I think, tonight, are we, on this? Lisa, do you know, we're not doing any action on this tonight?
It didn't ask for any astronaut, it was presentation.
Okay, alright. Doug, do you have anything to say, while you're with those people?
Yeah, no, no, other than.
Other than the dog being.
Other than the dog, then I can't, no, you know, so, I've been with Paul and Family Service for the last two years, and, you know, we do cover the existing senior building, for example, Oak Hill. Gail has clients at Oak Hill, Cedar Villa Apartments on Cedar Lake Road, and Grayslake, lakefront residences of Grayslake were just opened. So, we're really the only nonprofit that doesn't charge any out-of-pocket.
So we're really the only nonprofit that doesn't charge any out-of-pocket cost that's really providing these type of mental health counseling services and the Caregiver Resource Center to the Avon Township, other than for profits. And if you don't have insurance, you're not getting services. So really, if we go away, that... The capacity to really take care of those uninsured really goes away also. And even with the Reform Act, you know, there's no guarantee that, you know, these seniors are pre-Medicare and so forth, that they'll be able to even pay for our services. So, I mean, you know, we go over and beyond just providing the service. We really do that extra, making that phone call, or taking care of a pet, or just going over and beyond to service these seniors in Avon Township.
I'd like to make the comment, I remember last year when you gave your presentation, and I'm so glad you're out, we're not in a position that I have to abstain for the vote tonight. And be the meeting. But I sat in the audience and thought, you were, this was just what township should support. And I'm sitting here saying, this is just what township should support. And the board that sat up here said, we need a donation policy. So that's where this has been circulating for quite a while. So, we'll just add us on to accomplish that, right, guys?
If I may just say, because I do these presentations all over, many, many of your fellow townships are supporting this.
Thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
For your time. Item number fourteen, a presentation by Mr. Venturi, he's not here in the audience. He did send a letter out, I don't have that with me, like, last month it came in our packet, or right after our packets, I explained about this. Lisa, do you know more about this bus service that he's talking about?
Sir, it's called, I'm gonna get the name off, it's a really long name. But it's different townships, Pace working with different townships, and it also lost all this funding. And what it is, is where, as our bus doesn't qualify or our bus isn't available, this bus is available for, to go to the different townships. So I believe the following township's knowing it, and I know I'm gonna get this wrong, and I apologize. But Fremont is new to this, Lakeland is new to this. I know that, uh, Lake Villa is part of it, Grant is part of it, um, who else is in there?
Antioch.
Antioch.
Antioch, Antioch is there, um, covers like six, they're covering like New York City, yeah. I know it covers quite a bit, we're trying to give Vernon and Libertyville Township, since it only travels within the township. And a lot of the doctors that people want to go to, which is like Warren and like Libertyville, doesn't quite cover yet. But I know that this is something that if it goes away, if we don't assist in helping pay for it, then something with the funding is gone. I know that a lot of our township residents do use this. I know Mr. Venturi would probably be able to give you a much better presentation than I'm currently doing. But this is a very, very, I know it's hard to start it, Fremont just started it, and at first they're like, yeah, we're not gonna stick with this program, this is going nowhere. And last time we had a meeting, it has soared, the usage has just soared because public participation, public, I stopped, public transportation, they need, looks at it through my meditation. Public transportation in Wood County is very, is not very fluid through law. So we're trying to make this fluid throughout the township. And we believe that once we get Warren, and once we get Warren and Vernon and Libertyville, then I think we're gonna have a really good public transportation with the seniors and it's no cost. I believe it's two dollars for seniors and three dollars for anybody else who uses it.
Now, Lisa, I talked to Dan a little bit on this myself, and actually, you talked a little bit about something else I'd like to see our township do as far as our transportations. But on this particular one, there's some monetary value, I think they're looking for townships to put in, and I apologize, I don't remember the...
Yeah, that's...
Do you remember what it was?
Seven thousand dollars.
I've got the letter in front of me, it says he's looking for eight thousand dollars from Avon, Antioch, Grant, and Lake Villa, and then Fremont and Lakeland to contribute four thousand initially for this year, and I think eight thousand the following years.
Right. That is correct, that is what he's looking for. Because if we stop this, then we will be off the grid on this project.
And I've talked to Dan a little bit on this, and maybe Chris has talked to him too, it sounds like you put this money, it's gonna almost make a goal. It's like, it's like four or five more years we'll get a life out of it or something, I believe, or something.
Right, that is correct.
Correct.
It was done, it started out on a grant, and that grant is done and over with, so now it's, now it needs to be funded with, through the townships.
There's still a significant amount of funding coming directly from Pace. And I believe there was a significant amount of funding coming from, um, Dan had mentioned another organization that was providing a big portion of funding as well, I can't recall it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I can't remember what it is either, and I don't have his documents, I can't tell.
And I think he's doing it pre-need, so to speak, the funding is good for another couple more years, but this is... If we start putting some money in it now, it won't be like, get hit with, say, twenty, thirty thousand dollars two years from now. If we start putting a little money in now, we won't be...
It's gonna act like, that is correct though.
Yeah.
So I guess we don't have this on agenda, but I would like... But as far as, that's presentation, oh, we have it on, item number fifteen. The thing is, I guess we'd have to look at our line items, or...
Right, that's what I was gonna do, is look over line items, and I think this might be something that when we have our committee, committee of the whole, it's something that we can look at a little further there as well.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear a little more from Dan also before we commit ourselves to...
Right.
I think we have time, I think we have time, don't...
We do, because you're right, Bill, they still do have, they still do have money in the, for it to go for a couple more years. They're just looking for us to extend it.
Extend it. What's the other trustees feel like? Maybe table another meeting or something, give us something, what we can, what we should be putting at it, whether we throw the whole wax set, or...
And I'm like, there is a meeting, oh, there is a meeting that is held once a month on a Thursday morning, and I will, and I will, the next time I get invited to one, I will invite all the trustees so they too can hear more about the program as well.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea, too. Everybody say it's a good idea, Lisa. So, what's the pleasure of the trustees, is it maybe tabled item number fifteen to, we know a little more about it then?
Yeah, definitely let's table it, because it stands out there to give you the full thing, and my presentation is not that good. I think we should table it, we still have some time to be able to, all we're looking to see is that we will try to focus this for next year.
Okay. Okay. Is that fine with the rest of the trustees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then we'll just table number fifteen till either next month or till maybe Dan. Dan had another meeting tonight, I knew Dan had, I think Lake Villa had their township meeting tonight, so theirs is probably running late like ours is tonight. So that's why he's not here, I'm sure.
We can only invite him to one, we have a whole meeting.
And that might, yeah, and if we have, that may work better, because he may not have a meeting that night, and there's a lot of townships have meetings the same time we have ours, so, so, okay. Item number sixteen, public participation, anybody have anything to say about anything, how great a job we're doing, or anything like that?
No, I think you did a wonderful job.
I just wanted to segue to the continued funding for the transportation service. That's the biggest problem with all the townships, Family Service works with AHA up in Antioch. Antioch Area Healthcare Accessibility Alliance, and that's their biggest issue, is transportation for everyone, including seniors. And I know they're working with Dan on that, because there's no primary care services, healthcare services in that area. So part of it is because people can't get to Gurnee or Libertyville and Vista, the hospital they go through. So they're really limited without this type of transportation that the townships provide. And our seniors are limited even worse, because they're really homebound, and that's why we're so important, because we do go through their homes.
I work on that too a little bit, Doug. I'm in a situation myself where my mother's not capable of getting around, and Dan and I have talked. And it's something maybe I'd like to see this township do later, we're downs, I got blindsided a little bit tonight by our highway commissioner tonight, or downsided. And I'm thinking, no, I wanna keep the bus, and maybe add another one, and they're downsiding, so we're gonna have to talk. It's hard for our bus to get back in time, especially for a lot, there's more than one senior besides my mother in a situation where they're invalid, basically, and yet the doctors still want to see them. Now, there's two things that need to be done, maybe is look at a van, a smaller van, so you can take them and where you maybe come a little later in the day and get back, our bus has to be back by two or two-thirty. We may need to extend our hours and have another driver. Or this outreach, is there any doctors out there to do house calls and stuff like that? I think this, as a township, as well, in your organization, need to put out feelers and see, is there, is there any doctors out there to do house calls for elderly people, I know your nursing homes got doctors on staff.
I mean, there's home health, but that's not the doctor.
Doctors that may need prescribed, maybe...
Unfortunately, with the insurance costs, I seriously doubt we will be able to find anything like that.
As far as a doctor, you're thinking, Lisa?
Yeah, you know what, my father is gonna require some home, you know, home...
Right.
Right, and we have already been told that, no, we need to get him in a vehicle and get him to the doctor.
Yeah. And there again, Lisa, you're in the same situation that possibly I am, where you have to go to a doctor maybe sometime in the afternoon, and our bus has got to be back. And it's something this township and other townships, maybe we can share, even maybe part of this, what Dan's talking about, because I talked to Dan a little bit about this, and maybe it's something that maybe all the townships can get in. It's a beginning point, I think we're all getting there ourselves, so, I think it's, I think there's a need. We just gotta see how we can do it.
There definitely is a need, yeah.
So it's just something as, as a township, maybe we can go forward and look forward to that, you know, brainstorm. Yeah, committing a whole meeting, brainstorm, too.
There you go, I mean, just to get a cab, to do something like that, it's a hundred dollars, just to get from like, our area over to Green, the Green Lake Plaza.
Yeah, and that's not, it's just finding something that's got chairlift capabilities, too. I mean, right now, we rent a van, we go somewhere, we rent a van, I know my brother picks it up somewhere. And, you know, it's an hour or so, just going back and forth, just get a van, so, so that's something, maybe between all the townships, when you get feeling better, maybe the supervisors, at the next supervisor meeting, you can maybe address that, maybe, or something, too.
But I will definitely get that back.
Yeah, okay. Enough said, any public participation, Bob?
Yep.
I just, I do want to clarify that, I'm not trying to cut back on our service.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry, I can't hear.
He just needs clarifying, he's not cutting back, he's just downsizing the van.
What we did, Bill, we looked at the history of...
We've given Ford a little hard time, that bus was, that bus was...
I looked with Suzanne, we looked at the history of the bus.
Right.
We're not filling the bus up.
Right.
We're just not. And like I say, in the future, if that changes...
Yeah.
I'm more than happy to go back to the bus, but right now, it just doesn't make sense to have that empty bus riding around with one person or two people in there.
I agree.
Yeah, there are certain times when we've got, we've got people who want to open, you know, sell books in spots. But for the majority, we do not have people trying to get into the same spot as another person.
Right. Okay. No, I appreciate that, Bob. Okay, now, public participation, anybody got anything else to say?
You know, I just wonder if, is this being well advertised through the website, or through any other means?
I don't know, I've been on a website lately, so I don't know.
Sir, can we get your name for the record, please?
Ann Goodwell.
Thank you.
We could do a better job, in my opinion.
Okay.
And I think maybe the place to start for advertising is some of the local physician offices, that we're talking about healthcare transportation. You know, when the patient's sitting in the office and I can't get here, I don't know how to get here.
Yeah, that's a good idea, especially with some of the locals.
I was at the senior expo, and I want, we were giving lots of information out about our bus hours. And some people were aware of it, and some people were not. But unfortunately, our bus, and Doc can correct me if this is wrong, but our bus has to follow the rules of pace. And it's only a certain number of hours where we can be in and out, and if we are past that fact, we are a deep doo-doo.
Yeah. But, yeah, that's a good idea, Lisa, but maybe a couple pamphlets at some of these, we got one right over here in Gray, you know, we got a big, that Lake Forest deal in Grayslake, and you got the one around Lake, the trauma centers and stuff, and the nurses, you know, something, you know, maybe leave something out there, you know? Or at least let the doctors know, we offer this service.
Or the social workers.
Or the social...
And the senior building in there.
Or upcoming newsletter.
Yeah. So...
Yes.
Okay, any other public participation? Seeing none, do we, are we, do we need to go into an executive session, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. We have to go into an executive session, seeing that we can't...
We have to kick everybody out.
We have to excuse everybody in the room.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Chris makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Kathy.
Trustee Larson?
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove? Trustee McNeil?
Aye.
Trustee Delmar?
Aye.
Supervisor Rush?
Aye.
Now, this doesn't mean the meeting's over for everybody, there is no action plan for after the executive session, but they're only kicking you out for measures of convenience for the electronic participation. But...
Second.
Motion in the floor to go back in our monthly meeting, I guess...
Trustee DeGrove? Aye. Trustee Larson is absent. Trustee Delmar?
Aye.
Trustee McNeil?
Aye.
Trustee, or Supervisor Rush?
Aye, who's not there anymore?
Chris just went to powder his nose, so to speak. But we'll wait till he comes back in, we're in regular monthly board meetings, I think, Dan, you still want to do your role today?
Yes.
Is that okay, we use Lisa, Dan will play it quicker?
That's good, because Dan, I totally, I'm sure you'll do a much better job than that.
So we'll wait till Chris comes back into the room and join us, so he gets all this, too.
No, eight forty-one, we're trying to...
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
Open session.
I have a question, have we, have we approached Libertyville and Vernon Hills to expand to there as well?
They're actually looking for, and I can explain that, but they're actually starting another quadrant themselves, independent of ours, which is good. Because we don't want, the money, funds we have, we don't necessarily want to dilute them more. They're actually gonna be looking for their own funding sources for that quadrant, which would be Libertyville, Vernon Hills, I think, Moraine. There's four townships out there that they're getting together.
Would more of them be included in this, since they've got a huge medical thing in their area?
They're, they're not part of the Libertyville one, to my knowledge.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, you just, just...
Okay, we thought we might need a motion, I see attorney, but I guess we're just, because you were on, and you weren't here, but we are ready to adjourn our meeting, but seeing you showed up, Dan?
I appreciate that.
Please...
I'll try not to be too long, I...
You're just buying pizza, man.
That's what it takes. This, and I don't know if you have copies of this, this is actually the agreement, it's an intergovernmental agreement between the county, and this is the one for Avon. Lake Villa has the exact same one, except for where it says Township of Avon, it's Township of Lake Villa. And I'll get to what exactly this is, the short version, but I wanted to give you a little...
Can you stand even closer to the voice?
I can. Does it matter which one? How's that? Is that better? Can you...
It'll be closer.
Okay, I want to, I want to... How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, I want to talk a little bit about the program itself, this is the Northwest Demonstration Project, which is kind of an awkward name, but the reality of what it is, is it was a project to try and find a more efficient way to run mass transportation. One of the things we had started, actually, a couple of years before, about 2006, in Lake Villa Township, we started a partnership with Grant Township and Antioch Township, we called it Township Transit. Basically, it's a, it was kind of the predecessor to... Basically, it's a demonstr, it was kind of the predecessor to this project, but it was a destination-based transportation. Where we, basically what we did is we said, we're going to a fixed destination and anybody in these three townships that wants to go will take you there. We charged a dollar. Uh, it quickly ended up being a transportation to Walmart, because Super Walmart, you know, you buy your groceries there, you can buy your Christmas presents there, you can buy your prescription drugs, you buy just about everything there. So, it's worked out really well and we've been running it very efficiently. We run on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, we pick up anybody in those three townships that wants to go there. Uh, the total project, the total cost, I think, is about three thousand dollars a year per township, is the total budget for it. So, it's a, it's a great thing. So, we wanted to try and do that on a larger scale. So, uh, we, actually, we, we acquired two grants. One was a JARQ grant, which is basically a job access grant. Uh, we've got a hundred thousand dollar grant from them. And then a new freedom grant, uh, which was to provide alternative transportation for people who are covered under the American Disabilities Act, so people with disabilities. So, we had two hundred thousand dollars, but they're fifty percent matching grants, so we had to find somebody to come up with the other two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so Pace agreed to contribute a hundred thousand dollars out of their budget. They're also our contractors, so I guess they're giving us a billing reduction. Uh, and then Lake County contributed a hundred thousand dollars out of that quarter percent sales tax. So, through them, we had four hundred thousand dollars to actually operate our, our new project for, basically it was a two-year run it was supposed to go. It started about two thousand and nine. Uh, the idea was that we would start out with some fixed destinations. Uh, and initially we set up CLC, uh, the veteran station, and then the, and then the other one, which is technically outside of the four township areas, was Gurnee Mills. And the reason we picked those, because we thought those would be high traffic, they're transportation hubs either through Metro or through Pace had other buses there. Uh, CLC was particularly appealing because we could actually get people to CLC, uh, to take classes and stuff. Uh, then during, when we weren't going on our fixed destinations, the idea was that we would be able to run, uh, basically similar to the dial line, so we'd be able to supplement that. We, we did that, we found actually that the run to Metro, nobody took. So, we quickly eliminated that as a fixed destination. That doesn't mean when they weren't available, people could go there. Uh, but the CLC runs and the Gurnee Mill runs were very popular. Uh, the program actually expanded. There was a similar, uh, there was, Pace was running another route called Northwest Lake at the same time. And it, but it was running, I think it was running from like eight o'clock till four o'clock or something like that was the timeframe for that. And so ours was actually starting at six in the morning and going till seven thirty in the evening, so it was running a longer period of time. Our deal was we want people to be able to get to work. You can't go to work if you're going to start picking people up at eight o'clock, you had to go earlier. And you had to get people home from work, so we wanted to run later. So, this, this ran on for two thousand and ten and we should have run out of money at the end of two thousand and twelve. Uh, we actually were able to, we're still actually running on the first grant and we were able to secure a second grant, this for like amounts. So, we got another hundred thousand dollars new freedom and another, uh, JARQ grant for a hundred thousand dollars. But it's pretty clear that there won't be a third grant. Uh, the mon, the funds have dried up, uh, and there's, the, the pool of people who will be applying for it is quadruple, plus there's not any money. So, plus the fact we've gotten it twice before, we're not going to get it again. So, we're trying to figure a way to make this program sustainable. If you know anything about mass transportation, it's not cost-effective, you're not going to run it out of profit. Uh, we, when we started our program, we were running about twenty-seven dollars per trip and we're charging two. So, obviously, we're losing money. The only way to really do that, you, you could charge twenty-five dollars a trip, but nobody's going to be able to afford to take it and that's not the purpose of the mass transportation. So, what we tried to do is find, you know, more, more people you have on the bus, the cheaper it is to run. I think basically our cost for Pace is fifty dollars an hour for the bus, is what it goes down to. We were able to get our cost now from twenty-seven dollars a trip to twenty dollars a trip, which is almost a thirty percent savings, which is a huge savings. And we did that by kind of concentrating our hours when more people, peak hours, when more people would want to be on there, trying to steer people to common destinations, which made a lot of sense. Uh, and we were able to, you know, convince that, we used that, that analogy basically to convince to get the second grant. Now, we're looking into the future. And what we did is we, instead of spending two hundred thousand dollars a year, our goal was kind of to cut that down so we could actually sustain it. Uh, both JARQ and New Freedom said, well, you don't have to spend it all within the two-year period, you can take longer. So, the longer you can take, the better we are. And then we're hoping that Pace and the county will contribute some additional money down the road. Uh, so instead of just using the original grant money and basically running out of money middle of two thousand, middle of, the end of two thousand and fourteen or maybe middle of two thousand and fifteen, by one, cutting down costs, which we've done a good job of, uh, and by finding additional revenue sources to replace the JARQ grants, uh, we were hoping to extend the life of this even perpetually. You know, we've got, so the idea was that if the townships could contribute, because up to this time, the township, I think, some of the townships contributed a thousand dollars into the initial seat money, that was back about two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. I don't know if they even contributed it or not, some of them did, some didn't. Uh, that was more exploratory. But other than that, the townships really haven't contributed at all. Uh, the four partners, the original partners, as I said, are Avon, uh, Avon, Antioch, Lake Villa and Grant. Uh, and then we were able to expand it to Wakanda and Fremont Townships, but they only became, came into the picture in January of this year, so they're relatively new to it. So, we figured if we could contribute forty thousand dollars a year, and I think this agreement is only good for this year, but hopefully it will continue on, uh, forty thousand dollars a year, we could cut down our costs and if the county would still contribute some money and Pace would contribute some money, that we could actually contribute this transportation indefinitely, or at least for, you know, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and it's, it's been used a lot. I mean, just this year, from January through, I think, the August, we've had fifteen thousand trips. So, that's a lot of transportation. Avon Township accounts for about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of those trips. So, there's a lot of, lot of use in Avon, but you have the biggest population of all the townships in the group. So, there's a lot of use here. And the idea was that the initial four townships would each contribute eight thousand dollars. And then the new ones that just came in, we were only going to assess them four thousand dollars apiece, because we worked out the math that got us to forty thousand and seemed fair, because we've actually been using it for all these years for free. And then as they're, and the ridership's a lot lower too, because their program's lower, uh, and, you know, it's not as well-known. Uh, the ridership's a lot lower. And then as they came up to speed, then we'd all balance out and everybody would contribute the same amount. So, what we're asking for is, you know, Lake Villa, actually, we passed ours tonight, we passed the referendum. What we're asking Avon to do is to consider contributing eight thousand dollars. And then they actually, you know, as part of that, you know, have some input into the schedule, the locations, the destinations going forward. It's an important program. Uh, the county does a lot of the legwork for us. Uh, Bona, who does a great job, and Emily Carey, who also does a great job, do a great job of steering us and getting, doing all the legwork for it. Uh, and it's a good service for our residents. So, I mean, that's kind of my nickel presentation.
Dan, is this something that they're looking for this year or is it something that we need to put on our budget for next year?
They're actually looking for it for this year. We started talking about it, uh, back in January, February. So, we're actually, we're asking people to put it in their budgets for this year. And I know you guys probably haven't budgeted for it, but if there's ways you can shift, shift some money around, uh, we are looking for it as soon as, you know, in the next month or so.
Sorry.
It's okay. Somebody give me eight thousand dollars.
I gave it to you, Dan.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, it sounds, uh, sounds good, Dan, it sounds like it's something, yeah, we probably want to look at our budget and see what you do, but I, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, well, Dan, we'll, we'll definitely discuss this at a committee of the whole meeting. And Dan, is this something that can we still run to, or what, what do we, is it there our October meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I think that would be fine.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Much better presentation than mine.
Seeing that, any other, no other discussion, so we need that motion to adjourn. So, votes?
Seven seconds.
Second, Lisa's second, so Lisa wants to go. Uh, I guess we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Larson.
Aye.
Trustee Delmar.
Aye.
Trustee McNeil.
Aye.
Trustee DeGrove. Uh, trust, uh, Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, we are done.
Call the meeting, uh, for our special board meeting to order. Roll call. Oh, no, I guess, well, you did the pledge allegiance, you need to do it again, you want to flag that, that? Okay, you might have item number two. Table number two or whatever, and then we'll do the roll call.
Just a second.
Come on, Gene.
I know. Um, Trustee Delmar.
Here.
Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee DeGrove.
Here.
Trustee Larson.
Here.
Uh, Supervisor Rush.
Up here.
Noted present still is Clerk Kirby and Attorney Jerry Deets.
And I would prefer...
I would prefer Gula.
Oh, no.
He's still in there.
Oh, he's still there. And I would prefer Gula, I'm saying he's gone. I would prefer Gula.
And then for the minute Supervisor Rush is participating via electronic.
Via electronic.
Okay. Is there any public participation on the agenda items only?
Um, just a, Chris Larson, I'm a resident of the township. Just a, just a brief statement so that everybody's aware as to why this special meeting was called. Uh, there was a little bit of confusion at the end of last week between, um, a few different individuals and inability to get a couple of things out of, um, we had some, we'll, we'll just say we had some communication issues. Uh, there were a couple of items that we, we dealt with tonight. Uh, they weren't part of the board packet originally on Friday, in order to ensure that we could at least, um, deal with and disposition one of these items, um, without having a lot of access to our attorney, Mr. Deets, who was on vacation. You know, Trustee DeGrove and I decided to call a quick meeting here, uh, just to make sure that we could take care of these items or at least get them on the agendas. And no way is this an attempt at circumventing or doing anything, um, to, to, you know, undermine the supervisor and, um, her normal role in participating and putting these agendas together. So, apologies for any misunderstandings, the extra couple of minutes involved here tonight.
Okay.
Thanks for that, Rick.
Any other public participation?
Is there an agenda?
There is. Do you have copies?
There is. Can you look at mine? Oh, never mind that. I'll read the agendas since I didn't make copies of this. Um, bill payment of outstanding invoices from Anso Link, discussion of possible actions for setting the town hall meeting, discussion of possible appointment of treasurer, discussion of possible formation of a temporary budget committee in adjournment.
And I will say on number four, I, I guess I'll do it, we'll wait till discussion.
Public, your public participation?
No, I'll wait till under the discussion of number four.
That is number four.
Four is public participation on agenda item, you mean number five?
Okay, yeah, mine is, um, one number up, I'm sorry, number five.
Okay, bill payment of outstanding invoices, that one, Lisa? Of Anso? Okay, you're going to discuss that then, okay. All right, we'll go on to item number five then, bill payment of outstanding invoices from Anso Link.
Uh, we did talk about that, did you hear anything more about, did you send a letter, Jerry, or did we ever discuss that anymore? I thought we were, well, the last month.
This bill, this bill was presented to, um, our bookkeeper to page and it was not included in our, and it was included with the items taken off of it so that we could just move this bill forward. Um, but it was not presented to you in the bill packet.
So, it wasn't paid earlier then?
Correct.
What about the other two bills, did?
None of those bills...
They were not included either.
Are included. I have a copy of that.
It could have been.
Invoice that can distribute is appropriate, I think we all looked at this in brief last month.
Oh, that, okay, yeah, that's, okay.
But I do have copies if people need to be refreshed. Here, share with me. I only have a couple.
Right, and the ones that I passed out were the ones that, that I was that going to Dan, that was, I think I was going to take off another, I don't know, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, but was not...
Sorry, thank you, guys.
Wasn't I, um, paid on the bill?
I should have gotten this way to you, you know that.
Okay. So, Clay, Chris, you have something to say then, or what?
Yeah, um, prior to discussion, I think we have to make a motion.
Well, I guess we'd need a motion to, uh...
Well, you can, you can discuss something before you make a motion on it, I think.
Okay.
I think you guys have already talked about this and the other two bills. I, I was assuming when I got the first agenda that they were going to be paid in the bill packet, which is why I asked to take out the first agenda because it should have been in the bill packet.
Right.
But apparently it wasn't.
They were supposed to have been included in the bill packet.
That would be, uh, probably another thing moving forward. We'll just give you the information, agendas and anything else.
No, no, I, I got it in plenty of time, I just, yeah.
Okay. So, since we don't have a check or any GL lines, do we need to specify the appropriations?
Where it's going to come from and...
And the amounts, correct? Uh, pardon me while I do math. And I can't use my phone because it's recording the meeting. Lisa, do you remember the total number of hours you had recommended to reduce the invoice by, was it eleven?
I'm sorry? No, it was fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen hours?
I believe it was fifteen, because I know my head...
I see you go fifteen here, I thought you'd round that up, you know?
No, I believe it was fifteen hours. Without looking at the bill in my hand, I, I, you know...
Yeah, it's hard. This is why we all needed a good school teacher when we were growing up. Make a motion to authorize payment of fifteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, uh, to be distributed from...
You're, you're going to have to have between five-ten dash five-sixteen and then under contingencies of five...
Five-ten dash five-five-nine. Yep, I have the same accounts, Lisa.
Okay.
So, motion in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Yeah, that includes the three bills, less the amount that Lisa recommended to be right now.
I thought I just saw the, I just see the one account up there.
There's Anso Link.
Sorry, I've got the, there's two, others incorporated.
That's fine. Okay. So, all three bills total up to what you said?
Um, they total up to, sorry, the original total is nineteen thousand, one thirty-eight, twenty-nine, less the recommended deduction by Supervisor Rush of thirty-three seventy-five, brings the total to fifteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is the amount for my motion. Of which, seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be distributed from account five-dash-ten-dash-five-five-nine contingencies. Gene, I'll give all this to you in writing.
Aye.
And the balance to be paid from account five-dash-ten-dash-five-one-six for legal services.
Oh, Jerry's been working for free the rest of the year.
No, we left money for Jerry in that motion too, don't worry.
Right, I know, I'm just kidding.
Take it out of the trustee's pay. Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second this.
Okay, Lisa's second. So, any other discussion on this, um, to pay this bill finally? And this bill for, for, to stay to record is, most of it is from the, help me out, from the, from our election, uh, or the...
The electoral board.
Electoral board for the protesting of the, of the, uh...
Challenge.
Challenge, the challenge of the petitions. That's what this bill is about, paying the challenger the petitions.
And please let it note that this is not somebody that we picked, it was, it was given to us by Judge Foreman.
That's Judge Foreman, uh, elected, or in better terms.
Either way, we've had the bills here.
Had the bill.
Whatever, we have the bill, the motion's on the table.
It's up to the townships, whoever it would have been, it could have been a village, villages have been stuck with bills too, so we have to be stuck with this one. So...
Trustee Larson. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, oh, no, that'd be a second.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Delmar.
Yes.
Trustee McNeil.
Yes.
Trustee DeGrove.
Yes.
Supervisor Rush.
Aye.
Okay. All right, that being done, uh, number six, discussion possible action for setting the town hall meeting.
Hallelujah.
Do we have an agenda for that?
I do not have that documentation that I was trying to get together. Um, pursuant to the attorney's recommendation, I'd like to table this item until the committee, the whole meeting.
Okay.
That's fine, I just, when you set the date, you just have to have the agenda, so I just, my suggestion, when you need the agenda, set the date.
Right.
Right, there's no agenda, can't set a date, therefore.
Okay, we'll table it and we'll get that by, by the next meeting for sure, sorry. Okay, discussion of possible appointment of a treasurer.
Um, if I can open this up, there was some confusion about, there was, because of some miscommunications that occurred, there was confusion regarding contingency plans, check signing abilities, specifically and supervisor Rush's condition. The, the, the reason for this appearing was really to ensure that we had continuity of being able to issue duly authorized checks through writing. It's not a replacement of any of the actual treasury duties of the supervisor. I wanted the board to be aware that, it was my belief based on, you know, typical corporate policies in America, that there's always a secondary check writer when necessary to ensure continuity of operations. I know there's been some other discussion about that, Lisa, I'll let you go ahead and discuss from your side.
Um, I will just bring up that, and Bill, you can probably bring this up. I will let you know that there has never been a lapse in anything that has been signed in the, in the time that I have been away. Checks have been brought to me, I have signed them, I have gone through things. Everything is, is being handled in the same timely manner as if I was in the office. There has been no lapse in that aspect. I know for one hundred percent fact that, well, I don't know this person one hundred percent fact, but I know that when, um, in the past, when supervisor Christian had his stroke, that they immediately had a special meeting and they appointed someone as treasurer. I, um, I, I honestly do not have any plans of dropping dead tomorrow, not that I would. If, if I ever thought that my condition would be debilitating enough that I would not be able to come into the office for an overly extended amount of time, then I would definitely, um, I would definitely go with the board to appoint someone as the treasurer. But even as we are speaking, I am signing the checks of the approved spent, so there's really is not a delay in any of this. So I, I was just a little concerned as to why we appoint a treasurer when the chief, the supervisor's main role is, one of the main roles is chief financial officer.
Lisa, did you sign the trustees' checks? That's all that matters.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
And this, oh, I think this mis, there was miscommunication because there was missing communication. There was no communication coming toward, to the board about what your condition was in. People outside of the township knew more about this situation than I did as a trustee. And as I understand it now, in retrospect, certain people were told not to tell the trustees of your condition.
It's not that they were not told to tell the trustees, but I myself was confused at the beginning as to how long this would last and what would happen next. I mean, there was, I was in the hospital for like two days and thought I was going home and thought it would all be over again, and also they're like, nope, you're stink. So this is not something that I had, you know, planned that it would take this long, but, and it wasn't, it was, I was just trying to keep a little bit of privacy. It wasn't like I was trying to hide it from you.
Right, okay.
You're a public official though, and I think you had a fiduciary responsibility to the board to keep them apprised of where you were and that, and the possibility that we would, might have an emergency situation, so we could prepare. So we were not like, all of a sudden get a telephone call that, all, that we need an emergency, well, that, you know, like.
Well, if you have the questions, Kathy, you could have always contacted me. I was taking phone calls and emails and texting the entire time, so. And, you know, what Mark heard after he had his stroke, he was not letting people know, you know, that he was, you know, down and out. It was something that he was keeping private to himself. So that's something that I still do believe I should keep a little bit of privacy for myself.
Well, I think your position, I, what should have been that the board was apprised of your condition. And, and this whole little discussion would never have had ever occurred to anyone.
I, I think what Kathy's trying to say is not necessarily knowing what the particular condition or conditions would be, merely that you're out, you are going to be out for an extended period of time, and even that you weren't sure when you were going to be back, is I think the communication that trustee Degrow is, is looking for in this case, and perhaps the other trustees would have been better served to have that understanding upfront as well, just so that it wasn't a surprise when, you know, there was a notification as late as it was. That's all.
Okay, thank you, I understand that. But I, I mean, my office, my staff had clear guidance as to what would happen and, you know, what was happening and what should still happen. I mean, I even sent them out an email yesterday saying going, going forward. My, my hopes were to, excuse me, to be in the office half day this week, but unfortunately, old bodies don't heal as fast as young bodies. So I immediately filled that, same rules. It is my door, my front door of my house, this is my office, you need me to call me, you want me to contact me. If something's happening, find me. There is, it's being run exactly the same way, and that's the, that is the directive that my office has.
We appreciate that. Um, so with that being said, we guess we don't need to, she can still sign the checks since she's able to, so we can, we don't need to.
Right, we probably phrase the position.
If at any time I feel that this is going to linger on for more than it should, which I honestly truly have, but, and that's just my opinion, but if I do feel that this is taking way too long, and, and, you know, the doctor, all of a sudden I go in tomorrow and says, you're off for another month or two, then I would definitely let the board know that perhaps they should appoint someone in the interim while I'm gone. I would never, ever, my, my first responsibility is to the township, and I will make sure that everything gets done the way that it should get done. And I have been having, I have been relying on Jeanie, and I did, I did contact both Kathy and Chris when I needed them to step in, and I, I did, I will continue to do so. If I need some assistance, I will definitely go, going forward, I would definitely let the board know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, then, item number eight, discussion of possible formation of temporary budget committee.
Uh, this is a. Lisa?
Go ahead.
Okay. I know that phone can be tricky, I had that same problem where there's that little bit of a delay. Um, we discussed this previously, that there were some budget items that needed a more stringent review. I think there was a resolution that was supposed to be called in the meeting earlier tonight that didn't make it to the table, but I think even with that resolution being passed, we were still going to be strained on that budget, if not over. This is really to start the discussion more than anything. I don't know if there's documents that we need to form a committee, bylaws or anything like that. I'm sure attorney Deets is familiar with that more so than we are.
You guys would actually decide when you set up the committee what the terms are. My recommendation to you, we talked about it earlier, was that you have a committee of three, because I, I wanted to have actual special meeting notices and special meetings when the committee met, because you are talking about the budget, so you do want the public informed and the public should be able to come in and comment on it, rather than just have two of you meet, which would be a majority of the quorum, and any, any other situation would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, but this is kind of the five-member board exception, but.
Right.
We could, right.
Is something that we continue at, as the committee of the whole meeting?
Well, my concern is that if we pass it on to the committee of the whole meeting, we cannot act on it until October, which means we would put off any type of a hearing potentially until December, which is after our levies needs to be in.
Okay, yes, that's correct. So are you talking about formation now of a, of a temporary, or, I had it written.
Or should we have just a budget here?
Well, we need to, we need to put together a new budget to have a hearing about it, and that's what the committee portion of it is, is to have, you know, the assessor, commissioner Kula, supervisor Rush, you know, the three major departments to build up the entire budget and the levies and appropriations, be able to sit down at the table with one or more trustees, be able to follow OMA regulations, meaning that we can meet and have that open to the public as necessary to make the adjustments, so we can have the hearing at the same time we're doing appropriations, and make sure that we're appropriating based on a more accurately represented budget. That, that was the reason for pushing this forward tonight, Lisa.
And if you do do an amended budget, you have to follow the same process that you followed to pass it, which means that you have to have that budget on display, or on display but available for thirty days.
Right.
So.
Basically, what we need is a motion to create.
Yes, and then follow the Open Meetings Act, all meetings are posted, and then there isn't a meeting unless there's three trustees.
Well, we can't even hold it on the day of, like, the committee of the whole meeting, it just can be like a before or an after thing.
You can hold it any time, just go, you gotta set the date and notify the clerk and the papers, uh, for forty-eight hours. So I, I think we just need to, if you want to get this committee going, I would recommend, let's get formation of the committee of the, of the assessor and highway commissioner and supervisor. And then we need just the two trustees, you want, or you want three?
It's not my committee.
Well, I don't know, I thought it was a lack of.
No, no, three trustees have to be there.
Three trustees? They have to be there?
If it's going to be a meeting, yeah, if, if only two trustees are there, that's the majority of the quorum, it's not, it's not a meeting.
That'd be more of a meeting to discuss things. And then, then they'd have to have another meeting to present the budget.
Right.
A, amended budget to be on display for thirty days.
Well, the board would have to approve the amended budget. Really, really the intent here, and I, I know, Lisa, your availability's kind of curtailed, I don't know what Bob's is and assessor didn't. But to have a couple of meetings before the committee of the whole meeting, see if we can come up with something that's reasonable that could be proposed there so that we can get this, you know, on the agenda, so we can post it in October and hopefully adopt it in November.
So do we have, so we have a motion to create a committee that would include the department chairs and the, and three trustees, and you could decide where, as long as it's a publicly accessible place, according to the open meetings.
Right, I'm assuming it's going to be here.
Right.
Yeah.
And looking at the budgets, it's, it's just a few of them there, but there are the major ones that are out of the way.
Isn't there like twenty?
There's, there's something like twenty that are either in or potentially in danger at this point after tonight.
Yeah, we, we, you know. As trustees, we have, again, maybe even have to have a few questions to the art bookkeeper, just to make sure that, you know, some of these may be questioned, but maybe they're all done with the bills coming in. It looks like, oh, man, we're running out of money. But in a sense, there's no more bills the rest of the year. You know, so that's, you gotta look at some of those.
So it's, it's more like the recurring issues of salary, benefits.
Right.
Insurance, I know Bob's got projects in the spring that he needs engineering services for, potentially, where he can't do that. Um, you know, the assessor's travel budget and training budget, there's just not enough there for him to fill out the year, so.
Right.
There's a lot of things that need to be adjusted, and it's more than ten percent, so.
Right.
That being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to form a temporary budget committee for the purposes of reviewing this fiscal year's budget, to be comprised of the assessor, the highway commissioner, supervisor, and two or more at-large members of the board of trustees.
Three or more?
That incorporates three, because the supervisor is one of them.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
No.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Larson?
Aye.
Trustee Delmar?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Aye.
Trustee Degrow?
Aye.
Supervisor Rush?
Aye.
Okay. That being done, Lisa, you can go. We'll make the adjournment, wait, wait, hey, you gotta vote for the adjournment, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Second, you've got two seconds, we're waiting.
Delmar, Delmar first. Rush, uh, no, 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 wait, you have to be last. Um, supervisor, uh, trust, trustee Delmar.
Good morning, Jeanie.
Trustee Delmar. Uh, trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Degrow?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Supervisor Rush?
Aye, yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Go home.